Merry Christmas. I want to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We have a full house today. We're so excited to have you all here. And I know there are several people watching online, and welcome. At this time, I would like to welcome up for our invocation, Dr. Matt Richardson, our Public Health Director, and our pledges will be led by our District Clerk, Mr. David Trantham. I would like to remind everybody, please turn off your cell phones. You'll please stand.
Good morning, Matt.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Let's go to God. Our Father in Heaven, we just thank you for such a beautiful day today. Father, we know these are not promised to us, and we are so thankful for that. Father, we see that as a blessing, and we see it as an opportunity. And God, we just ask for the strength and wisdom to embrace it. Father, we thank you for so many things this morning, and we thank you for our friends and family. This time of year, we are blessed by a sense of gratitude. And Father, we know, while we don't know the exact day that your son was born, we celebrate his birth at this time, and we know what that means. And Father, we thank you for the gift of him and his example. Father, in that vein, we just think of the people that may not have the blessings we have, the blessings of health, of safety, of security, of family. Father, we just ask you, be with those who are without. And so, in our times of abundance or our times in poverty, Father, we just ask you, be with those who need you most, and so that you can walk with them, so it can be a season of peace and healing. And Father, I know I have people that I know that need that, and I know that others around me do as well. And so, Father, we ask for peace and healing for those who don't have it, and we know that you can and will provide. And Father, we petition you for that. And God, we know it's presumptuous to bring you requests when we've been so richly blessed, and yet we do, and yet we do. Father, we thank you for all, all good things. We thank you for a peace that passes understanding when we need it most. And God, we just ask you, continue to walk with us through this next year, as you have in the past year, and may we have the wisdom and understanding to see your presence in our lives when we have forgotten. Father, we bring these things to you, and we thank you for a gorgeous day in this time of year. We thank you for these things. We ask you of these things through the name of your precious Son, who sacrificed for us, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Good morning. Please join me in the pledge of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the great state of Texas, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson. I always look forward to your prayers. We have, let me see for item one. We have two individuals registered, but I believe they both want to speak on the Copper Canyon issue, so we will hold those to that agenda item. Let's go to item sixteen A. Sixteen A is approval of a resolution recognizing the North Texas Food Bank for their years of service to Denton County and any appropriate action. And Tricia, where are you? There you are. If you'll come forward, we'd love to honor you. And where's Gilbert Montez? Where's Gilbert here? Gilbert, I would love for you to make some comments as well, or anyone, any other other food partners, I'd like to welcome them. So, Tricia, go ahead and let's introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Tricia Cunningham. I'm president and CEO of the North Texas Food Bank, and it has been our honor and privilege to serve alongside you for the last forty-two years to ensure that our neighbors here in Denton County have access to the food that they need. We know that that need is growing, and I just have to give compliments to the county. I don't, I believe in all the counties that we have worked with. This county is the one that really stepped up and gave your resources to try to help fill that gap during the time whenever the need was greatest in COVID, when people didn't know. And you're continuing to be able to do that, and you support your community. One thing I learned about Denton very early on, whenever I came to the food bank, and I've been there seven and a half years now, is that Denton cares about its people. And I think that is evidenced, and I know that you're going to continue to do that and to continue to care. The other thing I want to say is through these forty-two years, it wasn't just me, it wasn't just our people at the North Texas Food Bank, it also wasn't just the county and the cities and the elected officials, it was so many of our partners who are there that are using their hands and feet to be able to distribute food to those neighbors who are in need. And I just want to express my extreme gratitude to those partners, and I pray that they continue to serve as effectively as possible.
Perfect. Thank you. Gilbert, would you like to say anything? Gilbert is our Executive Director of Christian Community Action in Lewisville.
Thank you, Judge Ete. So, we are one of the partners. CCA is one of the many partners of Denton County that North Texas Food Bank has served so faithfully over the forty-two years. And we are, we will miss every one of you. We have gotten to know not only Tricia, but many of her team members as well, and the relationships we've built go far beyond just the food that they provide to us. They are interested not only in helping to feed the families that we work with each day, but also in helping us to become a better organization. And I know you do that with all the organizations, all your partners that you serve. And so, in that, they have made us, they have made CCA a better organization. They have made Denton County a better county, and they've made our people, our families, a better, a better family. So, we're very grateful for you, and I know we've already talked. We will miss you, we'll continue to miss you, not only for what you provided for us, but for the special relationships we developed over forty-two years. Thank you.
If you're wondering, why are they leaving? If they've been here since nineteen eighty-two, there's an overall structure that aligns and sets boundaries of food distribution service areas. And sadly, those boundaries were changed recently, and so, so North Texas Food Bank is not going to be servicing Denton County anymore. So, this is a end of a very long, fruitful, and very blessed relationship that we've had with you all. So, so we wanted to take this moment at the end of the year and, and say, thank you, Tricia. Thank you for all of your efforts and all of the volunteers that have worked all these years and raised money and done so many great things to, to, to meet the need, to meet the need. So, we want to honor you all today. So, that's why we're here today, if you're wondering what's happening. So, this is a proclamation honoring the North Texas Food Bank for their many years of service. And whereas the North Texas Food Bank has made a profound and lasting impact on the communities it serves, exemplifying a commitment to alleviating hunger and providing essential food resources to individuals and families in need throughout Denton County. And whereas the North Texas Food Bank has been proudly serving Denton County since nineteen eighty-two, providing millions of meals and resources to those in need and consistently working to address food insecurity in our community. And whereas the North Texas Food Bank has provided more than forty-seven million fiscal meals and ten million SNAP meals, creating a tangible difference in the lives of thousands of individuals and families across Denton County. Whereas the North Texas Food Bank has allocated over six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in agency grants to vital community partners and organizations, ensuring that food resources and critical support reach the most vulnerable populations, especially children, seniors, and families in need. Whereas the North Texas Food Bank has established partnerships with over thirty feeding partners serving Denton County, including organizations like Christian Community Action, Little Elm Food Bank, Love Packs, and others, helping to extend its reach and impact throughout the area. And whereas North Texas Food Bank has worked in collaboration with the Louisville ISD, Denton ISD, and numerous charter schools to support programs like the School Pantry Program and the Food for Kids Backpack Program, providing nutritious food to students, providing nutritious food to students and families in need. And whereas North Texas Food Bank has supported seniors in Denton County by helping to enroll them into the Commodity Supplemental Food Program, ensuring that seniors have access to nutritious food they need to lead healthy and active lives. And whereas the North Texas Food Bank continues to demonstrate an unwavering commitment to its mission of closing the hunger gap and making a positive impact on the lives of those it serves year after year. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Denton County Commissioners' Court express our heartfelt gratitude to the North Texas Food Bank for its outstanding service, dedication, and tireless efforts in providing millions of meals, resources, and hope to the residents of Denton County done in open court this seventeenth day of December, two thousand and twenty-four, upon a motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Members, any other comments you would like to add? Commissioner Mitchell?
I have a few comments. You know, when, good morning. When COVID hit, we all had to pivot. I have a long-term relationship with CCA and a lot of the other nonprofits, but I didn't have the relationship with the food banks. And I'm telling you, I learned more about food, but food banks during that time than I've ever wanted to learn. Don and I, Don coordinated a meeting with the judge's permission. We coordinated, John, Don coordinated, coordinated a meeting every Friday that we'd have and discuss the needs and what we needed to do and how we needed to do this. And you know, I love the collaboration of everyone that was on those calls, because everyone had something that somebody else may need, which they probably wouldn't have given it to them had we not been on the call to let them know that, hey, I need this. Well, I need this. I need twenty of this. I need twenty-five of this. And I want to thank you, Tricia, for your collaboration with the Tarrant Area Food Bank and with Denton County, because you stepped right in and you were willing to do, willing to, to feed the citizens of Denton County, not just North Texas, but Denton County. I appreciate your integrity. I appreciate your professionalism. We sat in meetings deciding how we're going to handle this and what we're going to do and, and discussing who did what and who did this and that. And I just want to appreciate what you did. You, I know you have a team of people that helped with that, but like we do. But I thank you, and I thank you all for teaching me about food banks and how you got your food. And, and you know, I learned all about that, coming from the federal government and, and you know, and then you spread it out to all the counties. And I loved that, and I just want to thank you. I'm going to miss you. I hate losing you, but I'm not losing you, because I'll find you. You can't get away. But thank you for all you do. You know, it takes special people for all the nonprofits. I want you all to think about that. We get up here and we work and we give money and we make decisions and we collaborate with you guys, but it takes special people to do nonprofits. And it doesn't matter which one it is, whether it's food, clothes, people. You have to have a heart to do this. You can't do some of the things that y'all do without a heart. And you know, people don't know that. People think, well, that's just a job. It is not just a job. It's a ministry. Gilbert, you know that, you know, y'all work hard. And when the people are hurting, you're hurting. When you don't have enough food, enough clothes, enough this to give people, you hurt. And I just want to thank you this morning. I should have done this a long time ago, but I want to thank you all this morning. Tony, where are you? You're in here somewhere. All of you all, for what you do for the citizens of Denton County and the North Texas area, Tricia, because without you all, dedication and determination to make sure everybody's fed or everybody's taken care of, it wouldn't happen if you didn't have a heart for the people. And that's what we need these days, in, in judge and preaching. We, if you didn't have a heart for the people, things would not get done. We could all give a little money, you know, I'll give a little money, but what about time? You got to have time. You can give your money, but we need time. We need you to volunteer to help. We need you to sort toys and sort food and sort clothes and, you know, give a kind word. Thank you for all that you do, and I'm sorry to preach to you this morning. No, I'm not. We need this. We, we need-
It's a perfect time of year.
Our county, our, our country need to know that we have people that have needs, and we're the ones that have the resources. We need to be willing to give those resources. We may not, some of us may not have money. Some of us may not have talent, but we have time, and we need to give that time and help you all and lift you up, because you get tired too. Because when you're doing something and you, you don't have enough to do, it worries you down. But I'm telling you, I am challenging Denton County today, step up. Thank you very much.
Organ. Who wants to follow that one?
I will.
Commissioner Edmerson?
Amen.
Amen.
Am I all set? All right. Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all for being here. I echo all the sentiments Commissioner Mitchell said. We were talking about it earlier this morning. There's a lot of need out there that you may drive by, all these great neighborhoods and, or not so great neighborhoods, and you never know what's going on in there, in that, in those, in those houses and what's really going on, where the need really is. And so, I'm glad that these people are seeing the need and being people of action and addressing the need. So, we don't leave, because I would love to have a picture with all of our, all of our friends from North Texas Food Bank, and we'll invite up everybody, all the partner agencies as well. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, North Texas Food Bank.
All the partners that you guys served, we couldn't have served it if not you were right here.
I'm going to try to sort it.
Mom, you still have to-
No, we're, we're totally working. We can get nobody.
I know, sir.
Yes, I'm on my time.
Okay, let's look at Donna first, right down here.
Thank you so much.
It's good to see you.
How are you?
Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you. So nice to be here.
You just hope that the new place does its good job. You know what I'm saying? That's the problem. Right. We didn't have a choice.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Well, I agree with everything you said. We're going to go to item three A. We love doing these proclamations. It's important to say thank you to people. And just like we're saying thank you to the North Texas Food Bank for being here since nineteen eighty-two. We want to be here. Thank Rod Brown for being here since nineteen ninety-six. Let me get out his proclamation, his resolution here. Let's go to item three A, or approval of a resolution recognizing Rod Brown's retirement. Rod, where are you? Come on up. This is where we get to abundantly see you. Good, good morning.
Good morning.
I will in a minute. Rod, thank you for, for being here, and we'll, we'll read his proclamation and members and make any comments, and we promise to give you the last word. Does that sound okay?
Thank you. That's good.
Absolutely. This is a resolution honoring Rod Brown for twenty-eight years of service to Denton County, or resident Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the seventeenth day of December, two thousand and twenty-four. Consider the following resolution, whereas Rod Brown has been a dedicated employee with the Denton County Juvenile Probation Department since March the twenty-first, nineteen ninety-six, and will retire on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, after over twenty-eight years of service to Denton County and having worked with the youth of Texas for more than thirty-five years. Texas, does hereby extend to Rod Brown our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Rod on his well-earned retirement and extend our best wishes to him for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court, this is seventeenth day of December twenty twenty-four, upon a motion made by?
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Well, Rod, thank you so much for all those many years. You know, I often say the, the, those working in juvenile have a real opportunity to speak into the lives of those kids and, and hopefully positively impact them and influence them to get on the straight and narrow and get their life straightened out as a young adult, right? And so I just want to thank you for, on behalf of all the residents of Denton County, thank you for your noble work and all your many decades of service, not only to Denton County, but also to the state. Did you, did, did you want to say anything too, as well as the court?
I would. Uh, thank you very much. Um, I've known Rod a long time. Uh, we both worked together at Gainesville State School. Um, I got here, found out he was here. What I can say about Rod is, um, he's been a fantastic leader, um, he's been a great trainer, and he's been a developer of our probation staff. And we are very appreciative of that. It's my honor to stand here and, you know, wish him well as he ends what has been a great career. And we're happy for you and we wish you the best in retirement. You certainly earned this milestone and I'm glad to have been a part of it. Thank you.
Members, did y'all have anything to add?
Well, I just want to thank you for your service. Another great career of people helping pour into the young people as, as the judge says, tough job. Especially these days in eight, this day and age, we have some tough young people and you have to be tougher, but gentle and compassionate at the same time. So I want to thank you for the job that you've done all these years. It's evident that you liked what you did, loved what you did because you kept at it. I appreciate you and happy retirement.
Anyone else? All right. Well, Rod, okay, go ahead. Commissioner Edmondson.
Well, Commissioner Mitchell is making it easy for me today. I second everything what she said. In other words, I've talked too much.
Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, Mr. Brown, uh, I, I want to thank you, obviously, your dedication to the citizens and to Denton County. Uh, you know, we sit up here every week and, and we don't get to know every employee, obviously, very difficult, but we get to hear all these wonderful stories when they retire, which is great in one stance, and you get to understand what that individual did for, for not only the county, uh, but for the, for the, uh, the citizens of the county. And we just want to say thank you very much. And unfortunately, didn't get to know you personally, but obviously you did a heck of a job and we really appreciate it. We're going to hate to see you gone.
Just, my, my only question is, when I'm up here is why such a young man is retiring? But, uh, no, thank you so much for your service and, uh, enjoy your retirement.
Okay, I think this is where you, the floor is all yours.
Oh, man, this is, this is going to be a rough task.
All right.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Thank commissioners, uh, thank the committee. I'd like to thank, uh, some people personally, uh, Judge Ead, I first met him when he was doing the flyover my own, uh, office.
Yeah.
And of course, one of my offices was right next door to him.
That's right, we were neighbors.
Yeah, we were neighbors and he told me if I ever need anything, get ahold of him. I haven't cashed that in yet, but it's coming.
The offer still stands.
I met, uh, Commissioner Edmondson back when I was going to run for JP One at the time, and she taught me a lot about politics and how to do things. And I can remember I made a mistake in making up some cards, I didn't put paid by, and she got on me about that. And for, uh, Commissioner Mitchell, she's my go-to.
Yeah.
Uh, a lot of you guys don't know, there's a lot of construction that's going on over there in the, uh, Lee Walker Building.
Yeah.
And, uh, a lot of the, um, people was parking over there, so she was my go-to.
Yeah.
I emailed her, next day she was in the parking lot. And she, she laid down the law and told me what I need to do and talked to the supervisors over there and I appreciate that because all the employees was coming to me. Okay? I also like to thank a couple of people, my, my coworkers, um, at the job, uh, and also my team. I have a very, very good team in Lewisville and these POs, they work very, very hard. They do a lot of things and go out their way to help these families, families and give them services. And when they come to Commissioners Court and they need to ask for something, uh, the chief or something need to ask for something that's something that we need, I appreciate you guys helping us out and getting those things because Denton County is a great place to live and these families need services. I also, uh, also like to thank a few of my coworkers that I work with from side by side, uh, Sidney Pratier.
It's all right.
I try not to do this, but.
It's okay.
That's my girl. Joyce Fazio, Mary Stusick, Kristy Nathan. I was older than them, but they treated me like a little brother. Always trying to tell me what to do. But when Cindy became my, when Cindy became my boss, I was telling her what to do all the time. She said, Rod, stop. You always tell me what to do. I'm your boss now. So she's a good leader and she will lead this team and life goes on, you know? And, um, we just have to turn the page and, and keep on striving and doing the best and do the best that you can, all the employees, to help these, uh, families. I appreciate Denton County for providing for my family. I appreciate Commissioner Court for helping us all out. And these things I ask, one thing I need to leave with my group, do the little things so you can be a good probation officer, but always tell them, why take a chance on being good when you can be great?
Ooh, I love that. All right. All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Let's look at Don first, right down here. Any local upstairs? Sorry.
Upstairs? A little bit.
Thank you so much. Picture.
It's good to see you.
It's good to see you. How are you?
Doing good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
So nice to be here.
You just hope that the new place does its good job.
You know what I'm saying? That's the problem.
Right. We didn't have a choice.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Well, I agree with everything you said. We're going to go to item three A. We love doing these, um, proclamations. It's important to say thank you to people. And just like we're saying thank you to the North Texas Food Bank for being here since nineteen eighty-two, we want to be here and thank Rod Brown for being here since nineteen ninety-six. Let me get out his proclamation, his resolution here. Let's go to item three A, our approval of a resolution recognizing Rod Brown's retirement. Rod, where are you? Come on up. This is where we get to abundantly. See you. Good, good morning.
Good morning.
I will in a minute. Well, Rod, thank you for, for being here and we'll, we'll, um, read his proclamation and members and make any comments, and we promise to give you the last word. Does that sound okay?
Thank you.
All right, absolutely. This is a resolution honoring Rod Brown for twenty-eight years of service to Denton County, or resident county commissioners court, Denton County, Texas during a regular session on the seventeenth day of December twenty twenty-four, consider the following resolution, whereas Rod Brown has been a dedicated employee with the Denton County Juvenile Probation Department since March the twenty-first nineteen ninety-six and will retire on December thirty-first twenty twenty-four after over twenty-eight years of service to Denton County and having worked with the youth of Texas for more than thirty-five years. Whereas Rod Brown began his juvenile justice career in nineteen eighty-nine with the Texas Juvenile Justice Department where he provided direct supervision of youth committed to state custody at the Gainesville State School. Rod became part of the Denton County Work Family in March nineteen ninety-six as a detention officer one at the Denton County Sheriff's Office. Three months later, Rod returned to juvenile justice work where, when he was hired by the juvenile probation as a shift supervisor in the juvenile detention center. In March nineteen ninety-nine, Rod transferred to field probation where he supervised juveniles on court-ordered probation. He was promoted in December nineteen ninety-nine to intensive supervision probation officer and would serve in his role for the next ten years. In November two thousand nine, Rod was promoted to case work supervisor and for the past fifteen years has overseen the probation services provided to residents of Southern Denton County at the Lee Walker Government Center, the Sandy Jacobs Government Center in the Southwest Courthouse. Whereas Rod Brown has devoted himself to the betterment of children and families who came into contact with the Texas Juvenile Justice Department and the Denton County Juvenile Probation Department and its programs and facilities. He has earned the respect of his peers, supervisors, supervisors, and juvenile justice professionals across the state of Texas. And whereas the juvenile probation department would like to express its sincere gratitude to Rod for his hard work and service throughout his career and wish him well in retirement. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Rod Brown our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Rod on his well-earned retirement and extend our best wishes to her for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court, this is seventeenth day of December twenty twenty-four, upon a motion made by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Sue, thank you so much for working in so many different, um, jobs here in the county. You know, thank you for answering the call to public service and, and investing your, your twenty years here with the county and all those different jobs. And, and I, I just want to thank you for, for going above and beyond and thank you for investing your time here and leaving it better. Members, are there any other comments you'd like to add?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
For taking care of all these problems and I love a can-do person, you know, just watch me, get out of the way and I'll get it done. And I know you had to tell David, David, I got this many times, but, uh, thank you for all that you do and thank you for making the places where you worked a better place to, to work. I appreciate you and enjoy those fourteen grandkids and have fun.
All right.
He's going to want to come back to work.
No more furniture moving. All right, David.
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, we're very appreciative of Sue. I've known her more than half of my life.
Yeah.
Uh, I've known her since high school easily when I was a young pup, running paperwork to JP One for law firms in Denton County and handling paperwork. And Sue was always one of the ladies that was there at the, uh, in the office, willing to help and willing to be of service. And, uh, when I came into office in twenty nineteen, uh, you know, I had an open position come and Sue was more than willing to, to jump on board. And I was looking for somebody that was, you know, familiar with Denton County and how it operated and, and other people in departments and kind of help our office transition to being more efficient amongst the sheriff's office and the courts and, and stuff like that. Sue was, uh, one of the first people that applied and, and you know, we were happy to have her. I'm sad to see her go, but, uh, you know, I hope she enjoys retirement and I, I think she expressed that if she called us looking for a job, something went wrong somewhere. So I'm hoping she does not call. I'm hoping that she, uh, finds, uh, peace and opportunity in her volunteer work and with her grandkids and, and traveling. And, uh, I just wish her all the best and, uh, she's one of those faces that's always been here in Denton County and part of her family and, uh, you know, we're starting to see a lot of those folks retire and, and move on and, and enjoy life and, uh, beyond the county. And she's one of those people that, that will be doing that. So we're thankful for her service and wish her all the best.
All right, good, Sue. All right, that's your last, you get the last word here, my friend.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I'm very proud to have worked for Denton County.
We're proud to have you. All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, Sue.
All right. All right. Let's go to item three C, which is our presentation of the twenty twenty-four Texas Fire Marshals Association Excellence Award to the Denton County Fire Marshal's Office. And I'd like to welcome forward our very own Fire Marshal Brad Sebastian. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Um, if, if I could get our presenters to come up, uh, and I'll introduce them. I have the honor of introducing our Texas Fire Marshals Association officers and presenters. Um, Chief of Prevention, Tim DeDeere, uh, he is with Farmer's Branch. Um, he is also the Chair of Achievements Committee for the Texas Fire Marshals Association. And then Assistant Chief and Fire Marshal Kelly Kistner, he's with Frisco, and the Second Vice President for Texas Fire Marshals Association.
Good morning, gentlemen. We're glad to have you here.
Yeah, welcome. Good morning, Judge Eads, Commissioners, Chief Sebastian, Chief Dumas, Deputy Fire Marshal Cochran, and the rest of the Fire Marshal's Office for Denton County. My name is Tim DeDeere. I'm the Assistant Chief with the Farmer's Branch Fire Department, but also the Chair of the Excellence in Fire Prevention Award Committee. I also have Kelly Kistner with Frisco, and he is our Vice President with the Texas Fire Marshals Association here to help present today this, uh, award, well-deserving award. On November seventh, at our two thousand twenty-four Annual Texas Fire Marshals Conference Banquet, was held in San Marcos, the Denton County Fire Marshal's Office was recognized for exemplifying excellence in fire prevention and as of the department. The Achievement of Excellence in Fire Prevention Award is an annual award to recognize organizations for performance excellence in fire prevention. It was established in two thousand eight and the award is administered by the Texas Fire Marshals Association, the official state chapter of the International Fire Marshals Association. Only twenty-three cities, counties, and universities have been honored to receive this
for her dedicated service to Denton County. Sue's contagious smile and laughter will be missed. We congratulate Sue on her well earned retirement and extend our best wishes to her for continued success, happiness and good health in the years to come. Done in open court this the seventeenth day of December twenty twenty four upon a motion made by Commissioner Edmonton, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Sue, thank you so much for working in so many different jobs here in the county. You know, thank you for answering the call to public service and investing your, your twenty years here with the county and all those different jobs and and I just want to thank you for, for going above and beyond and thank you for investing your time here and leaving it better. Members, are there any other comments you'd like to add?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much. For taking care of all these problems and I love a can do person. You know, just watch me, get out of the way and I'll get it done. And I know you had to tell David, David, I got this many times, but uh, thank you for all that you do and thank you for making the places where you worked a better place to, to work. I appreciate you and enjoy those fourteen grandkids and have fun.
All right.
He's gonna want to come back to work.
No more furniture moving. All right, David.
Yeah, I just want to say we're very appreciative of Sue. I've known her more than half of my life.
Yep.
I've known her since high school easily when I was a young pup running paperwork to JP one for law firms in Denton County and handling paperwork and Sue was always one of the ladies that was there at the, in the office willing to help and willing to be of service and when I came into office in twenty nineteen, you know, I had an open position come and Sue was more than willing to, to jump on board and I was looking for somebody that was, you know, familiar with Denton County and how it operated and, and other people in departments and kind of help our office transition to being more efficient amongst the sheriff's office and the courts and, and stuff like that. Sue was one of the first people that applied and, and you know, we were happy to have her and I'm sad to see her go, but you know, I hope she enjoys retirement and I, I think she expressed that if she called us looking for a job, something went wrong somewhere, so I'm hoping she does not call. I'm hoping that she finds a peace and opportunity in her volunteer work and with her grandkids and, and traveling and I just wish her all the best and she's one of those faces that's always been here in Denton County and part of her family and you know, we're starting to see a lot of those folks retire and, and move on and, and enjoy life and beyond the county and she's one of those people that, that will be doing that. So we're thankful for her service and wish her all the best.
All right, good, Sue. All right, that's your last, you get the last word here, my friend.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I'm very proud to have worked for Denton County.
We're proud to have you. All right, we have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries you now, Sue. All right, let's go to item three C, which is our presentation of the twenty twenty four Texas Fire Marshals Association Excellence Award to the Denton County Fire Marshal's Office. And I'd like to welcome for our very own Fire Marshal Brad Sebastian. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Um, if, if I could get our presenters to come up and I'll introduce them. I have the honor of introducing our Texas Fire Marshals Association Officers and Presenters. Chief of Prevention, Tim DeDeere. He is with Farmer's Branch. Um, he is also the Chair of Achievements Committee for the Texas Fire Marshals Association. And then Assistant Chief and Fire Marshal Kelly Kistner. He's with Frisco and the Second Vice President for Texas Fire Marshals Association.
Good morning, gentlemen. We're glad to have you here.
Yeah, welcome. Good morning. Judge Eads, Commissioners, Chief Sebastian, Chief Dumas, Deputy Fire Marshal Cochran and the rest of the Fire Marshal's Office for Denton County. My name is Tim DeDeere. I'm the Assistant Chief with the Farmer's Branch Fire Department, but also the Chair of the Excellence in Fire Prevention Award Committee. I also have Kelly Kistner with Frisco and he is our Vice President with the Texas Fire Marshals Association here to help present today this award, well deserving award. On November seventh, at our two thousand and twenty four Annual Texas Fire Marshals Conference banquet was held in San Marcos, the Denton County Fire Marshal's Office was recognized for simplifying excellence in fire prevention and as of the department. The Achievement of Excellence in Fire Prevention Award is an annual award to recognize organizations for performance excellence in fire prevention. It was established in two thousand and eight and the award is administered by the Texas Fire Marshals Association, the official state chapter of the International Fire Marshals Association. Only twenty-three cities, counties and universities have been honored to receive this award since two thousand and eight. That speaks volumes. To successfully receive the Achievement of Excellence in Fire Prevention Award, the applicant must obtain a total of at least a hundred and thirty points for bronze level, a hundred and fifty-five points for silver and a hundred and eighty points for the gold out of a possible two hundred and ten points. The scoring categories are based on authority, the organization in itself and ethics. The fire and life safety programs they provide. Performance metrics, the web-based communications and automations, the certifications, the education and the development of their leaders and staff, the professional organizations that they're involved with, their fire prevention legislation or ordinances and task force and other cooperative programs that they're involved with. Our President for Texas Fire Marshals Association, Omar Garza, sent these words to share with you. On behalf of the Texas Fire Marshals Association, I'd like to congratulate you on receiving this excellence award for your community. The award is one of the most prestigious awards that a department can receive in the field of fire prevention. You have now become one of the few elite cities, counties or universities to receive this award. The criteria for this award is very competitive and it takes professionalism, dedication and hard work to be honored with this award. I'd like to express our appreciation for going beyond the call of duty to advance your fire prevention efforts in your community. So on behalf of the Texas Fire Marshals Association, I would like to congratulate the Denton County Fire Marshal's Office on receiving the twenty twenty four Gold Level Award for Achievement of Excellence in Fire Prevention with a score of one ninety-five.
While y'all are doing that, I want to thank, thank you gentlemen for being here this morning. Thank you for your dedication to the fire service right here in North Texas and Frisco and down to Farmer's Branch and I want to commend this department for what y'all did this year. Y'all do a great job every year, year over year. Y'all do excellent job. But the innovation that y'all demonstrated this year is just unbelievable and I, and I'm, I'm glad that we're not the only ones who have noticed the excellent work that y'all have done. Fire service and basic public safety is an essential function of local government. And of all governments. And so, and the Commissioners Court shares your vision for that. And Brad, you and your entire team, everybody that's there. Is someone back answering the phone? I wonder. I hope not. I hope you're all here because it's a team effort, right? It's a team effort. It's not just the Fire Marshal. It's the whole department and every, and all of y'all here. But the innovation that y'all have demonstrated this last year with our fire protection plan and looking at new and innovative ways which we could deliver the service not only to our existing citizens, but to our future citizens as this county continues to grow. And I believe that y'all's department could have just stayed in the permitting business and kind of just been hum ho, you know, just very routine. But y'all did not. Y'all chose to be creative, innovative, work with our partners, be willing to answer the tough questions and, and do what is number one, what is right. What is right for the residents. And that's exactly what y'all did this year. And I just want to take this opportunity. We thanked y'all before back when y'all came back months ago with the plan. Thank y'all for showing your innovation. Thank y'all for demonstrating your leadership. And I believe what y'all are setting forth in this county will be able to be replicated throughout Texas and many other venues as well. Because of those innovations, I just want to thank each and every one of y'all and congratulations. And I want to thank y'all for noticing the great work that they have been doing up here in Denton County. Anyone else want to address that? What I said, okay?
Well, you know, I second that. Y'all have been very special to me. We saw a need. Y'all have the talent and the expertise to, to go and, and find a solution to that need. And I just couldn't be proud of y'all and I'm so happy that everybody else now knows how great you are too. Thank you for all you've done.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, anyone else who goes?
Yeah, I just want to say excellent job to you and your team. And obviously the work doesn't stop with this, but it's nice to be recognized. So, and thank you two gentlemen for coming today. Appreciate it.
Well, I just, I want to say concur with my fellow commissioners, but I also, it is true, you guys this year, it's trailblazing, right? I mean, this is, this was not just, just turning the wheel. And I, I think that's great, the innovation that you all have taken and I think you're going to be setting some standards and that's a great thing.
Jody, did you want to add any comments? All right, Brad.
Yes. Well, first off, let me thank y'all for the support. Without, without support from each and every one of you, we couldn't do what we do today. So receiving this award, award is also because of how you support us in the past. Um, also, I'd like to thank Texas Fire Marshals Association. Thank y'all for coming up, presenting this award. Thank you for choosing us. I will tell you that this award is, is definitely from each and every one of my team. Not a single one of them didn't take a part. We have had to go back and, you know, review certifications, review policies, set some new policies and really just overview of our full and complete organization and each and every one of them took part of it. Mr. Gonzalez over here. We had to go back and look at some of the policies that he set originally back in the day and, you know, and you, and some of those we were able to use and some we had to update, but there was a standard set there that we were able to use as well. So I'll thank each and every one of them. And I will tell you, you know, the best part about the award, you know, getting a nice shiny award is all great, but really what it took for us to get there and, and the challenges and the updating of things in our agency that we needed to complete. That's what it really was about to get us where we need to be, should be. And so again, the award is great, but where it's taken us to the next level is really the best thing. So thank you for your support.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and I'll make a motion to accept this presentation. The chair move for approval. Second by Commissioner Edmonton. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries you now. Say congratulations, congratulations. Well deserved. All right, I'm going to go ahead and order just a little bit here to try to accommodate some of our guests. Let's go to item ten E. Ten E, let's go to item ten E. If y'all would please turn in your hymnal. And Stephen, if you'll make your way down. Ten E is approval of the Cooper Creek Estates Phase Three Final Plat. This is forty-six point one six three acres located in Commissioner Precinct Four and Stephen Bellnappu. Now I do have two individuals registered to speak, but we'll go ahead and hear from Stephen first. Go ahead, sir.
So I've got a presentation put together for you.
Everything. Oh. Are y'all fine with the appointments? I put it in. If we need a reappointment in case we want to.
I don't need to do this.
There. Okay. I think we're ready.
Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
So we've got two items agenda today for Copper Creek Estates. So we've got the Phase Three Final Plat and the request to construct private roads. Uh, just a little history. So on August twenty-seventh, this plat was before court and court disapproved the plat application. We had concerns about drainage and whether those easements were properly located and properly sized. Uh, and just kind of go over where we're at in the timeline. So if you'll remember House Bill thirty-one sixty-seven, that's the shot clock bill requires cities and counties to act on plats within a certain timeframe. Uh, we've got thirty days for the first go around. Any approvals with conditions or disapprovals, the applicant can take as much time as they want, make whatever corrections they need. Once they submit that back to us, we have fifteen days then for court to take action on the, on the plat application. So they did submit their application back on December ninth and so we've got fifteen days from that date to either approve, approve with conditions or disapprove. Uh, and just as a reminder that any conditional approval or disapproval has to be directly related to state law or our subdivision rules of regulation. So we had two primary drainage issues that needed to be resolved. One of them was the discharge of a proposed detention pond. They had it discharging onto private property without the benefit of an easement. Can't do that. So that was the first issue we had. And then we had some uncertainty on the capacity of drainage that goes through Lantana. So this, and I'll show you here in a minute. It kind of drains in two different directions and, and part of this drains through and out of Lantana. So this is the drainage area map. If you can, so if you see where it says O S six, that's the design point that drains into Lantana. Um, if you'll look at to the right of B one, that's where the detention pond is proposed to be placed. So the detention pond, um, they have worked out a design solution to that. They're planning to place an underground storm drain line in an existing drainage easement. That'll be on the lots on the south side of Cameron Trail. That underground line will go out to Copper Canyon and connect to Copper Canyon's underground storm drain system. That work is in Copper Canyon, so Copper Canyon is the permitting authority for that. They have approved the construction plans. They've not approved the permit. They're going to wait to approve the permit until the plat's been approved. And again, this is the old detention pond design. This is one that we had an issue with. The hatched area there was where they were planning on surface draining that out to Copper Canyon. Uh, and again, that was on private property. There was no easement present. And this is the new design, uh, showing the, the underground storm drain line. Again, it, it connects to the detention pond that on the left of the screen goes out to Copper Canyon and attaches to Copper Canyon's, um, system. And then we had concerns about the Lantana drainage. So as I said, this drains, it drains into and then back out of Lantana. Uh, at the time, we did not have information as to whether or not that system could, could accommodate the increased flow. We did get the Lantana plans from the applicant. We've taken a look at that. We've taken a look at the hydrology and the hydraulics. It appears that whenever the area where this plat was, is going, where Phase Three is going, that whenever that analysis was done when Lantana was built, that the assumption was that that was going to be built out like Lantana. So four thousand, five thousand square foot lot. So it's less impervious area. So the design assumptions were that there were going to be, there would be a lot more flow into that system than is going to occur today because we've got one acre lots instead of eight acre lots. So this is the storm drain line in Lantana, um, highlighted there in yellow. Again, it discharged, it comes into Lantana, connects to a detention pond in Lantana and then discharges out into the existing Copper Creek Estates. And then the private road issue, we've got that before you as well. Per the county's ordinance, new county maintained roads cannot connect to a private road. So the only option there is for this development to occur is, is for court to approve private roads. That's the only access that they've got. So the plan is to connect to the existing private roads in the existing Copper Creek Estates. Again, this is the final plat that's before you today. And our recommendation is for court to approve both agenda items. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Stephen. We may have other questions for you. Let's go to Troy Meyer, Town of Copper Canyon. Good morning, sir. Glad to have you here.
Good morning, Judge Eads and Commissioners. We just want to, on behalf of the mayor and town council of Copper Canyon, we just want to wish you guys a Merry Christmas this year.
Absolutely.
So there's been a lot of work on this development, a lot of collaboration between the county and the town of Copper Canyon. So we appreciate that. Uh, there's a few concerns that we would like the developer to address today if possible. One being the construction entrance. one being the construction entrance to this development and where that's going to be located. There was one proposal that it was going to access a gravel road and then feed on to Copper Canyon Road, and just want to know how he's going to maintain that road as it connects to Copper Canyon Road and protect that concrete road, as well as the dust issues that may occur during the length of the development as well. One other thing that we also would like him to kind of give us some information on is how he's going to communicate to our current residents of Copper Canyon, although this is in the county. We understand that, but our residents are concerned about the construction phases and the noises and the working hours and all those things. So if he, if he'd be willing to address that today, that'd be greatly appreciated on our part.
Perfect.
But those are the things I just wanted to address, and then again, we appreciate Stephen and his team in working with the Town of Copper Canyon.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir.
We will, is our developer here? Okay, perfect. Let's get this other public comment form, and then we will have him address it. Next is Victoria Hubbard. Good morning. Glad to have you here. Thank you, ma'am. Good to see you again.
Good morning, Judge Eads. Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Absolutely.
With regards to this issue. So we, as residents of Copper Creek Estates Phase One and Two, wish to express our gratitude to Judge Eads and the Commissioners, especially Commissioner Mitchell, for facilitating a meeting between the county, the town, and our homeowners to discuss our worries with regards to the drainage from Phase Three as this project moves forward. After the last meeting, when Commissioner Mitchell requested that the developer meet with not only the residents but also the town to come to a solution that was amenable to all parties, we were hopeful that our concerns would finally be heard. But unfortunately, the developer did not heed that request. It is certainly disappointing that the developer did not heed the admonition of this court. Regardless, we appreciate the willingness of both Commissioner Mitchell and the members of Development Services to meet with all of us and hear and see our concerns so that they perhaps can be mitigated. I appreciate each and every one of you and the service that you give to our county, and want to wish you a very Merry Christmas. Thank you, and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas to you too. Thank you.
Yeah, it's disappointing. I've had situations like that, and they've been always very.
No, I just have those two, those two. So all right, what we want to hear from the applicant? Go right ahead. Did you want to speak to the, to the, to official request of this city regarding the construction entrance into communication plan?
Good morning, Michael Kennedy. I don't remember all the questions, but I believe some of the concerns were hours of work, and we will work during the legal hours to work, you know, on designated days and holidays. So, and all the homeowners in there have a direct line to me. I built every one of their houses, so if they have a question regarding that, I'm an open door. As far as the gravel road, it is private property. That's why the drainage was not allowed to go down it without an easement. So what I have, when I negotiated the purchase of the land from the owners of the road, is a four and a half year access. And light construction traffic will come through the neighborhood as far as pickup trucks myself. We have negotiated that road in an effort to preserve the concrete roads for concrete trucks and heavy equipment. And as far as dust goes down that road, we do have a water truck, but during construction of the actual subdivision, it will be there on site. It'll be available, and it will keep the dust down on the roads. But, you know, we haven't been down those roads for the last few months, and there's been several complaints. And the owners and the purpose of that road is gas well access on the adjacent property. So you've got eighteen-wheelers technicians that barrel up and down that road daily, and it's not us. But as far as our traffic goes, during our work hours and work that we're performing with our vehicles, we will do everything within our power to keep, you know, that pleasant for the neighbors.
Did you set up a HOA with the earlier phase? Is there a HOA there?
Yes, sir.
Can you pledge to communicate through the HOA to all the members?
We will and do.
I know that the relationships are strained, you know, through this process. So, so I think communication is be a key thing. If you could pledge to to do that, I think that would be great.
I'm still the president of the HOA during the development. So we will send out, you know, notices, and we do, you know, currently. If there's going to be cones in the street, or if a gate's going to be open, or what have you, so we will continue to do so.
But after the construction is done, you will actually invite some of the citizens to be on the HOA board?
Absolutely. When we sell about half the lots in the back phase, we will invite a homeowner, ran board. We sure will. And in the meantime, we're adding the the single member right now here at the beginning of twenty twenty-five. And I also, at my discretion, volunteered to have a homeowner board of three to where they could make their own decisions early, starting early regarding just day-to-day stuff like whether they have Christmas lights, who mows the grass, and that kind of stuff that we don't. Yeah, I mean, whatever makes them happy, right, is is what needs to happen on those topics, for sure.
And you've already conveyed that to the citizens that they know that?
Yes, they're very.
Okay, Troy, did you have anything else? And you're okay?
All right. Members, any other questions? Commissioner Edmondson?
It's not a question, it's really a comment. I live in Ropes and Ranch, which has an HOA and is constructing all the time. So I understand why people want to know what hours they're going to be working. Where I live, they can't start before seven in the morning, and they have to quit by dark. And I think that's just kind of logical, but I do understand the residents' concern. But frankly, you have gone out of your way and been over there, tried to address as many issues as possible. And I want to thank you for that because not everyone is as concerned about the residents. You're living there, and I think that makes a huge difference. So thank you for working with Stephen and and with the residents. I think it's going to be a wonderful addition, and I just want to thank you and tell you. As long as you don't start before seven in the morning, I'll bet they'll be okay.
All right. Hearing other questions or comments? Do we have a motion for approval? We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson? Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks to the residents also for bringing this up.
Thank you all for all of your involvement. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, let's next, let's go over to.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you, Stephen. Let's go over to our fourteens. Let's go to fourteen D. Approval of American Rescue Plan ARPA Community Grant Agreement. The agreement between Denton County, Texas, the county and number one courthouse drive suite thirty-one hundred Denton, Texas, seven six two oh eight, a political subdivision of the state of Texas, buying through the Denton County Commissioners Court in Denton County and the Boys and Girls Club of Tarrant County Incorporated on Mission in Denton County, the grant recipient at thirty-two eighteen East Bellknap Street, Fort Worth, Texas, seven six one one one, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization in good standing and duly authorized to conduct business under the laws of the state of Texas whereby Denton County will grant Denton County and the Boys and Girls Club of Tarrant County Incorporated on Mission here in Denton County as grant recipient up to the sum of three million dollars grant funds with funding to come from the American Rescue Plan funds.
Judge, I just want to thank the court and the Boys and Girls Club back in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. This was brought to us by citizens asking for help from the Boys and Girls Club. We used to have one in Denton County a long time ago. This is not just people coming in. This is people coming in to help our children. They have STEM classes, they get their homework done, they're working in Northwood Mobile Home Park in Providence and many other areas in Denton County. And my goal was for them to find a permanent place to work here in Denton, in Denton County. When they first came in, they had the mobile vans, and they asked for mobile vans. We progress, I understand the city of Louisville is willing to give, rent them, sell them a property for a permanent place, and I want to thank the mayor and and the city manager who's here this morning, Mel Gilmore and Clara, for working with the Boys and Girls Club to make sure that our kids have a safe place where they can go in the evening time after school. I've had the opportunity to visit some of the places, and I know they work hard. The kids come in and they enjoy it, and not only do they teach them, help them with their homework, they have classes, and I also had the opportunity to go to Tarrant Counties and see what all they did for the Boys and Girls Club. And I think one of the residents told me that her granddaughter, this was one of the thing, things that helped her get through when her parents was working. She had no one to watch her in the evening time, and the Boys and Girls Club not only were babysitters, but there also were people that helped them with homework, taught them about STEM classes, taught them about computers, and all the things that they need to know in the future. So if there's no other comments, I'm going to move approval.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Collette. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Let's go to fourteen E. Approval of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Community Grant Agreement. The agreement between Denton County, Texas, the county and one courthouse drive suite thirty-one hundred Denton, Denton, Texas, seven six two oh eight, a political subdivision of the state of Texas, buying through the Denton County Commissioners Court and Christian Community Action. The grant recipient at two hundred South Mill Street, Louisville, Texas, seven five zero five seven, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization in good standing and duly associated, authorized to conduct business under the laws of the state of Texas whereby Denton County will grant Christian Community Action as grant recipient up to three million dollars grant funds with funding to come from the American Rescue Act funds. Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
I'll second.
And I have a comment. These funds that we're using are funds that was passed down by the federal government. Not any other time, if my time on the Commissioners Court, have we been able to grant funds except for health-wise with the tobacco fund that we've been able to give to nonprofits. But at this time, because of the ARPA funds that have been provided during the COVID situation from the federal government, we were able to give these funds, and they're one-time funds. We want to let the recipient know that they're one-time funds, and just thank you for all the work that you do here in Denton County. I've worked with CCA for many years, and I know the good work that they do all over the county in Louisville and the Carlini, and all over Denton County. Gilbert, where are you? Is he gone? Yeah, I think he's gone, but I thank you for the job that you do and all the citizens here that have helped and volunteered to make sure.
He was just one of our many food, food partners this morning.
Yeah, one of our food partners that made sure.
One of many things they do.
Yeah. Thank you.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen F. Approval of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Community Grant Agreement. The agreement between Denton County, Texas, the county and one courthouse drive suite thirty-one hundred Denton, Texas, seven six two oh eight, a political subdivision of the state of Texas, buying through the Denton County Commissioners Court and Denton County Friends of the Family, the grant recipient, P O Box six four zero Denton, Texas, seven six two oh two, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization in good standing and duly authorized to conduct business under the laws of the state of Texas whereby Denton County will grant Denton County Friends of the Family as grant recipient up to the sum of eight million dollars grant funds with funding to come from the American Rescue Act earned interest funds. And any appropriate action, the chair move for approval?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion?
Another comment. Want to make sure that people know that these are funds that are from ARPA, not county funds, but come from the American Rescue Funds, one-time fund, Tony. That they can use to help our citizens.
Build a new facility.
Facility that our citizens that are experiencing domestic violence. Not all of us experience domestic violence, but we have a lot of people in this county that are experiencing domestic violence, and we want to make sure that we do our part to help them, but this is a one-time fund. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion, a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Tony, I want to, let's give a, I want to give a thank you to what y'all do. Would your team all stand up? Let's give a big Denton County thank you to all of y'all for what y'all do. Thank y'all for being here. Thank you for being here today and for being here for our women in need and our families in need. And I know that these resources, Tony, do you want to say something real quick? All right, come on. And I know that what y'all, y'all will utilize these funds to make a permanent lasting improvement in the lives of our residents here in Denton County. Go right ahead, ma'am.
Mostly, I want to say thank you. Thank you to the judge and the commissioners. We are eternally grateful. This will make a difference in the life of citizens, not only today or next year, but for generations to come, that we get to build a new facility to house families that are experiencing domestic violence, and they have a safe place to come to. What you've done is you have set the standard so high for other communities to step up to that Denton County will serve as a, as an example to others in collaboration, and that you are literally providing a, a safe haven and a beacon of hope as families come to us many times on their very, very worst day of their life. And you will help us to make a difference in a way that no one else has done. I'm grateful. I thank you both, all of you for your efforts and for your dedication to your citizens in this community. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for what y'all do. It's tough business, but I'm glad you're in it. I'm glad you're working with those families.
Tony, how long have you been?
Bianca. On January twen- twen- tenth, January tenth, next year will be twenty years. I'll celebrate my twenty-year anniversary with Denton County Friends of the Family. It's been a pleasure to serve, and it is, I'll take this as an early Christmas present for Denton County Friends of the Family and an anniversary present for me. Thank you.
Perfect. Good.
And I understand Commissioner Mitchell, one time. I got it. Doesn't mean we won't ask, but one time.
Well, I think the court did a great job of making these one-time investments.
Absolutely.
In capital projects and helping make lasting impact, so it's very good.
And that's another tough job. You know, I don't know if you've, anybody toured the place and had a tour.
Sure.
It's another tough job for, and you have to be invested to see all the things that go on and where the women and families coming in, children in desperate need. And you have to talk to them and make sure that they have a safe place. And so I want to thank you again for that and continue to help people, please.
We appreciate it.
Tony, I'd like to make you, you are probably already aware of this. When I saw an ad recently on TV, it talks about when women and children have to flee from their home, they often want to bring a pet with them. And I, I can understand that. Well, Purina Dog Food is willing to donate food for, I guess, dogs rather than just all pets, but I just thought that was so neat that that, because that is a support animal, an emotional support animal for many members of the family.
We do know statistics show that in homes where domestic violence occurs, also pets are at risk. And many times, families, women may call us, and they are reluctant to leave if we don't have a safe place for their animal as well. So we do some partnership with our local animal shelter to support them. And in the new facility, we will have onsite animal care as well.
Good. Well, and I hope you're reading, gives you all a whole lot of dog food.
Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next is fourteen G. Approval of the American Rescue Plan ARPA Community Grant Agreement. The agreement between Denton County, Texas, the county and one courthouse drive suite thirty-one hundred Denton, Texas, seven six two eight, a political subdivision of the state of Texas, buying through the Denton County Commissioners Court and Denton County Lawyers Foundation, the grant recipient at fifteen oh four East McKinney Street, Denton, Texas, seven six two oh nine, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization in good standing and duly authorized to conduct business under the laws of the state of Texas whereby Denton County will grant Denton County Lawyers Foundation as recipient up to the sum of eighty thousand grant funds with funding to come from the American Rescue Act ARPA funds. Any appropriate action, the chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item fourteen H. Approval of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Community Grant Agreement. The agreement between Denton County, Texas, the county and one courthouse drive suite thirty-one hundred Denton, Texas, seven six two eight, a political subdivision of the state of Texas, buying through the Denton County Commissioners Court and Grace Like Rain D B A Giving Grace, the grant recipient at thirty-three zero six North Loop two eighty-eight Suite one thirty, Denton, Texas, seven six two oh nine, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization in good standing and duly authorized to conduct. good standing and duly authorized to conduct business under the laws of the state of Texas whereby Denton County will grant Grace Like Rain D.B.A. Giving Grace as grant recipient up to the sum of six million dollars grant funds with funding to come from the American Rescue Act earned interest funds.
Judge, I'll move approval.
Chair will second. We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen I. Approval of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Community Grant Agreement. The agreement between Denton County, Texas, the county at one Courthouse Drive Suite 3100 Denton, Texas, seven six two eight, a political subdivision of the state of Texas by and through the county Commissioners Court, and Ranch and Rescue. The grant recipient at P.O. Box one zero four seven, Argyle, Texas, seven six two six six nine four three one, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization in good standing and duly authorized to conduct business under the laws of the state of Texas whereby Denton County will grant Ranch and Rescue. Grant recipient up to one million dollars grant funds with funding to come from the American Rescue Act funds. And any appropriate action?
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Williams. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion, Commissioner?
Yeah, I just want to thank Bob and his staff for what they do. It's a unique situation, and it's greatly appreciated and definitely needed, not only in Denton County but across the country. So thank you and appreciate the court.
Judge, I'm sorry.
Right ahead.
People may not realize that this safe house that Bob runs for young men who have been sexually trafficked is the only one in the entire country, and it's very innovative. It's a news thing, and it's something that's so desperately needed, and I think most of us did not realize that boys are trafficked too. We always think of women and girls, and that's not the case now. Up to, I think, forty to fifty percent of these victims are males. So I'm delighted that we're helping Bob out. His news facility is in Precinct Ford. We're just so happy to have him. I'm sorry that we have to have a place like that, but I'm glad there's Bob Williams who knew about it and got it going.
This is another hard job, Judge. I just have to comment on that, that you have to be really dedicated and committed to see some of the things that happens and how these young men are treated, and Bob is able to, and his staff, to help them recover and become citizens, upstanding citizens after all that they've gone through. And in my, you know, I would love for us not to have to give any money to anybody, but unfortunately, these nonprofits need this money. One-time grant. Want to make sure you know that. But you know what? We're giving these today because we've got to have these funds given out to help people by December the thirty-first and at least execute the agreement, or we have to return this money back to the federal government. And so I'm glad that Denton County has worked, all of us, all five of us, to help with items that we know that need help. People need help. In times like these, people need an anchor. In times like these, we need a savior. And I'm going to stop right there because I'm getting worked up again. Thank y'all very much.
We have a motion, and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for all y'alls. Great work. You have lots of advocates in this room that work to help y'all, not just the people upon the dais. You're sitting next to one. Next is fourteen J. Approval of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Community Grant Agreement. The agreement between Denton County, Texas, the county at one Courthouse Drive Suite 3100 Denton, Texas, seven six two oh eight, a political subdivision of the state of Texas by and through the Denton County Commissioners Court, and Special Abilities of North Texas. The grant recipient at fifteen eleven FM four oh seven, Lewisville, Texas, seven five zero seven seven, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization in good standing and duly authorized to conduct business under the laws of the state of Texas whereby Denton County will grant Special Abilities of North Texas as grant recipient up to one million dollars grant funds with funding to come from the American Rescue Act earned interest funds. The chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. I want to just make a quick note on this one as well. This is about, to write housing for those who have development disabilities, and so we realize that housing in all across Denton County is a significant concern, and this particular one helps, will provide group homes for those with developmental, mental development issues that we're very pleased that we'll be able to help create housing for this very deserving population. Do we have any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Before we do, I want to thank, we got rid of our, we just completed our ARPA, we got grant funds there. I want to thank Jody Gonzalez and Eric Gilderslie, and Michelle Brewer and County Administration. I want to thank our legal department. John Felwer, you at, John? Thank you. And so many others for all of y'alls, Scott's been involved in our purchasing and facilities as we're making some other, other facilities, investments with these funds. I want to thank our auditor, Jeff May. I want to thank, thank every, and I shouldn't have gone down the name list, but it's okay. Y'all jump in if y'all, if I lost, forgot anybody. I want to thank y'all. Living in very historic times we've gone through since 2020, the medical stuff, and then as we have left that, that time in our county that we're able to make some of these investments with these federal funds, it's a very special opportunity, as Commissioner Mitchell said. Very proud of the court for making a variety of investments, whether it's open space and park land, future park land, and building acquisitions that we've done, land acquisitions that we've done, and obviously investing in our partners. We can't, the county can't do all this stuff, but we can enable our partners to do that, and, and we're standing up operations that will outlive us and by building buildings that will be here long after this court is out of office, are no longer here. And so I think, I just want to, I want to thank everybody as we went through this together. I want to thank the court as we went through this together. We made investments in our workforce, right, in our Denton County workforce. We made purchases here in our, for Denton County Government as well, technology and others, other things. So I just want to thank everyone. Dawn, thank you for your efforts. So I just want to thank everyone. I could go down the whole list of everybody that played a part in all of our ARPA conversations, but thank y'all. Thank y'all for working hard. Thank you for getting it all done, and with that, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
All right, we reconvened from our recess. Let's go to thirteen J. Public hearing to consider pursuant to Texas Tax Code Section three one two zero zero two, adoption of proposed Denton County Economic Incentive Policy twenty twenty four. In following said hearing, approve and adopt a resolution approving the economic incentive guidelines and criteria Denton County Economic Incentive Policy two zero two four under Texas Tax Code, Chapter three twelve, effective December seventeenth, twenty twenty four, of a motion to open a public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. We are in a public hearing related to our Denton County Economic Incentive Policy. Is there any members of the audience wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to this draft of the Denton County Economic Incentive Policy? Anyone in attendance wish to speak in favor of or opposed to? Hearing under the motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. We do have a motion to adopt the proposed Denton County Economic Incentive Policy. The chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I want to thank Rena Maloney, thank you very much. She's hiding over there. Thank you for all your good work and efforts. Next is go to thirteen K, approval resolution and approval of the agreement in to participate in tax increment reinvestment zone number four between the city of Louisville, Texas and Denton County, Texas, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item thirteen L, approve the second amendment to the participation agreement between the city of Louisville, Texas and Denton County, Texas for the tax increment reinvestment zone number one, the city of Louisville, any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I want to thank our dear friends from the city of Louisville. Thank y'all for all the great work y'all have done and continue to do, and we're excited to partner with you. Next is thirteen M, approval of the town of Flowermount in Denton County amended and restated participation agreement, tax increment financing reinvestment zone number one, town of Flowermount, Texas, any appropriate action? The chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item thirteen N, approval of participation in town of Flowermount tax increment reinvestment zone number two, and any appropriate action? The chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. I want to do, stop and do a big Denton County shout out to Rena. Thank you very much for your efforts on these, especially your assistance of late with me with the Flowermount. Thank you so much. I appreciate our future partnership as we learn to grow that part of the county. Let's go to item, we're going to go back to, do we still the sheriff's office here? Or the good sheriff is here. Sheriff, I'm going to get to you. But I want to, I want to take care of them if they need to. I'm going to try to get people out of here if they need to. Let's go to eight A, report from Human Resources Regarding Hiring Actions of Elected Officials, presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge Commissioners, we have one promotion in the district court administration. We have three new hires in juvenile probation for this week. That's it.
Perfect. Thank you. That's, again, there was no action. I just present for recording purposes only. Next is eight B, approval of order maker reporting to elected officials. This is, that is outside of the county policy, and let's, let's have Mr. Murphy, our good sheriff, speak to this, to issues. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, it's always nice to follow folks during Christmas time when you are so generous. I hope that that will continue.
The spirit continues.
Spirit continues. But, but seriously, I know, I know. Seriously, these three promotions are as a result of Chief Caver retiring, if you guys know. And all these are internal. Tim Rich will be the new jail chief. Tim has thirty-two years, not just with Denton County, but in the Denton County Jail. Tim knows it inside out and sideways. He will take that position January first. What I'm asking here is basically the same thing I asked four years ago, coming into a new term, is that the assistant chief salary is the same as the other two assistant chiefs, who, to keep those salaries together. Filling Tim's captain's spot will be John Hargrove, who again is a long fifteen-year employee of Denton County, who will be moving into that captain's spot. What I'm asking here is only that his salary be equal to our lowest paid captain's salary. As you guys know, we have a, due to our pay scale and the way it works, there's a wide gap. All I'm trying to do is keep that gap the same and not widen it more. And the same with Mr. Vance, who is a fifteen-year veteran of Denton County Sheriff's Office, he'll be taking Mr. Hargrove's lieutenant's spot. And same thing, I'm asking that he be paid the same as the lowest paid lieutenant. The higher salaries are budgeted, and so there will be a surplus this budget, and in the next budget, the request will actually be lower because the other, the new captain, new lieutenant will be making less money than the current captain and current lieutenant. So that's why I'm asking for these salaries, just to, just to keep it stable.
That's a good explanation, Sheriff. Members, are there any questions?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, you'll be, this year's budget, you'll probably be saving about tw- close to twenty-five thousand dollars because.
The chair, okay.
And then the budget will be lower, request will be lower next budget cycle.
With a motion by Commissioner, second by the chair, Commissioner Falconer has a comment.
No, thank you, Sheriff. I appreciate that. And I just, just to clarify that Mr. Hargrove and Mr. Vance, those will be moving out of the civil service?
That's correct. They will be exempt per, election time, I get to choose, on civil service, I get to choose some exempt positions. They will be exempt positions during that time, so there's no need to go through the promotional process and the, because these aren't effective till January first.
Right. Very good.
Okay. With a motion, a second, thank you for clarifying that. With a motion, a second, any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously to eight C.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. This is the other two items, approval of order maker appointment reporting to elected officials, not reporting to commissioners' court. That's outside of the Cola County policy. Chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is eight D, approval of order maker reporting to elected officials, not reporting to commissioners' court. That is outside the county policy. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, a second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Let's go back to two. We'll run through this. Our consent agenda, members, are there any items like to pull off the consent agenda, or have a motion for approval as presented? With a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item two A, approval of order making appointments. Item two B is approval of the payroll. Let's go to five A, approval of the bill report payments from CSUD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's forfeiture, VIT, interest in DA for which our funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have six additions today. The first is to Travel Agent Alliance for five thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars. Have three additions to Northeast Therapeutics P L L C. One's for four hundred and fifty dollars, one's for three hundred and sixty dollars, and one's for two hundred and seventy dollars. And then I have two for Julie Tyner, one for ninety-six dollars, and one's for eight hundred and forty dollars.
Perfect. We have a motion to approve the amended bill report.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is five B, accept and approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four financial reports through September twenty twenty-four.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is five C, approval to obligate the following funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. One, amount of eighteen million five hundred sixteen thousand dollars from the auditor account number five four seven six eight nine one zero six seven for the purchase of a hundred and four point four one five acres of land known as the Linischmidt property. Property ID thirty-seven zero eight eight. And number two, amount of ten million from the ARPA Lost Revenue Fund, auditor account number five four seven six eight five one zero eight five. And up to eighteen million from the ARPA Fund Auditor Account Number five four six eight nine five one zero six seven to be used towards the purchase of the facility and property located at three zero zero one Colorado Boulevard in Denton with property ID two five five one four seven. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, the chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Again, I'd just second, echo my comments earlier about all the assistance from everybody on the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Thank you so much. Next is six A, approval to contract with G Two General Contractors for the construction of the foundation for the Stoney Store under interlocal purchasing system, TIPS Cooperative Contract two one one zero zero one, amount of a hundred eighty-seven, three, three hundred nine dollars and ninety-five cents. The chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six B, approval of the purchase of Motorola AXS Dispatch Console Software and accompanying equipment from Motorola Solutions through the Houston Galveston Area Council of Governors Cooperative Purchasing Program, HGAC, by contract R A zero five two one, in amount of one million nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars and two cents to be purchased by the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds, and any appropriate action?
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six C, approval of purchase of four hundred live pack CR2 AEDs and accessories from Safety Med through the Buy Board Cooperative Contract seven zero four two three, in amount of one million fifteen thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars to be purchased with American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six D, approval of purchase of three APX eight zero zero portable radios from Motorola Solutions Incorporated through the Houston Galveston Area Council Cooperative Contract R A zero five two one, in amount of twenty-nine thousand two hundred ninety-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents to be purchased the American Rescue Plan ARPA LAT CF funds, and any appropriate action?
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six E, approval of purchase of durable medical equipment from Stryker Sales LLC through the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract zero one zero four one eight two three S T Y, in amount of one million three hundred four thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-five cents to be purchased with American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. Chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six F, approval of purchase of labor services and equipment for the upgrade of the county's internet bandwidth from Presidio Network Solutions Group LLC, and approves reseller of IMX Technology, IMX Technology Incorporated and Nomic Networks Incorporated through the Texas Department of Information and Resources, DIR, Cooperative Contract DIR T S O four three one five, and the Texas Interlocal Purchasing System, TIPS Cooperative Contracts two three zero one zero five and two two zero one zero five, in the amount, two two, two two zero one zero five, in the amount of one million five hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-one cents to be purchased with the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. Motion by Commissioner, Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six G, approval of purchase of four RSP Z two dual channel interoperability gateways from JPS Interoperability Solutions Incorporated through the Houston Galveston Area Council, HGAC Cooperative Contract R A zero five two one, in amount of twenty-seven thousand sixteen dollars and eighty-one cents to be purchased with American Rescue Plan ARPA LAT CF funds.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six H, approval renewal of cloud fair services from Freeit Data Solutions Incorporated, amount of ninety-four thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents through the Texas Department of Information and Resources, DIR, Cooperative Contract DIR C P O four eight six three. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six I, approval of renewal of Mimecast subscription services from S H I Government Solutions Incorporated, in amount of eighty-five thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty cents through the Texas Department of Information and Resources, DIR, Cooperative Contract DIR C P O four eight seven five. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six J, approval renewal of Plainview P P M Pro Portfolio Manager Flex Software from S H I Government Solutions, amount of eighty-eight thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars through the Buy Board Cooperative Contract six six one two two. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six K, approval renewal of indigent defense with Microsoft Azure Hosting Services from Tech Share Local Government Cooperation, Corporation for years twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, estimate amount of ninety-one thousand two hundred eighty dollars through the master interlocal agreement with Salsa Participation and Tech Share to be purchased with the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six L, approval renewal of the APC Advantage Ultra Service Plan from Graybar Electric Company Incorporated, amount of seventy-two thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents to the Omnia Partners Cooperative Contract E V two three seven zero, and any appropriate action?
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six M, approval renewal of Kronos Gold Maintenance for Workforce Management Solution with IMX Technology, IMX Technology, in the amount of ninety-three thousand four hundred forty-five dollars through the Texas Department of Information and Resources, DIR, Cooperative Contract DIR T S O four three one five. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is, the agenda keeps going. Next is item six N. This is an expensive meeting. We're spending lots of money. Next is six N, approval of exemption from bidding for the sole source purchase of Xavanta Software from Compros Incorporated, in amount of fifty-six thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents, and any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we keep going. Six O, approval to allocate three thousand in American Rescue Plan ARPA funds for federal wage compliance monitoring services related to the microwave installation of the Motorola Towers project. These services will be provided by Contractor Compliance and Monitoring Incorporated, any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Pardon me. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, six P, approval amendment to E Clinical Works LLC Software License and Support Agreement for Electronic Medical Records and Practice Management to Add a Provider to the existing agreement, R F P zero two one four two two three five. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six Q, approval specifications for CSP two four two eight three one electrical. of specifications for C S P two four two eight three one electrical and generator upgrades, Phase One, and Appointments Evaluation Committee to include the following employees of public facilities. Steve Pimble, Journeyman Electrician, Austin Wells was Facility Division Manager, and Chris Matheson, Facility Division Manager.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, yes ma'am?
Could we possibly go to item thirteen now?
Thirteen? Yeah, I'd be happy to. Which one?
The one about, um, thirteen, C and E.
Ma'am?
C and E. These are, um, appointments. Yeah, sorry. E is the, there's two of them there. We can do C later, but thirteen, E, and S.
Oh, thank you. I'd be happy to. Let's go to item thirteen. The approval of reappointing Sheldon Gilbert, Richard Merrill, and Keith Moschburn for a two-year term to the Denton County Emergency Services District, E S D number one.
If we had those candidates, please stand, so we see who we're reappointing.
We'll have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson. The Chair will second. I want to, we want to thank y'all for all y'all's service. Thank y'all for, for being here today. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And next, let's go to thirteen F. Approval of reappointing Sheldon Gilbert and Richard Merrill to a two-year term to the Denton County Emergency Services District, E S D number two. Any appropriate action? We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson. The Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And we do have the E S D Fire Chief here with us.
Yes, good, thank you.
We're not appointing him to anything besides that. Well, thank you, Chief.
That's right. Good. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for being here. Thank y'all. Merry Christmas, y'all. Thank y'all for being here. Thank you, Commissioner Edmondson. Where was I?
Seven A?
I can't see you there.
Seven A. All right. You are welcome to leave if you want. It won't hurt our feelings. So, it's totally, totally fine.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Next is seven A. Report for miscellaneous equipment and software service presented for recording purposes only. And we will not take action on that because that's our new standing item. Next, let's go to, Merry Christmas. And thank y'all for what you do. Stay safe. Next is seven B. Approval of budget amendment request one zero zero three nine zero to increase revenue and allocate the victim notification grant expenditures for the criminal district attorney, amount of thirty-one thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars to victim notification services.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven C. Approval of budget amendment request one zero zero four zero zero. That will roll over funds for various county departments to fiscal year twenty twenty-five that were committed out of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, but not expended until after the fiscal year was closed out for a total amendment of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and, thirty-seven million nine hundred forty-six thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars.
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven D. Approval of budget amendment request one zero zero four one zero to roll over funds for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four to fiscal year twenty twenty-five for various P I bond and tax note issues for road, building, and technology projects totaling three hundred and ten million, three hundred sixty-four thousand one hundred thirty-six, one hundred sixty-three dollars, which includes one hundred and six million, five hundred nineteen thousand four hundred seventy-seven dollars encumbered with purchase orders. The funds were not extended prior to the end of the fiscal year and will need to roll over to the new fiscal year.
I'll move it through.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven E. Approval of budget amendment request one zero zero four two zero for public health to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five public health vaccination and capacity grant, amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars. And any appropriate action?
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven F. Approval of budget amendment request one zero zero four three zero for public health to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five public health tuberculosis prevention and control grant, amount of two hundred and three thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars and transfer two, twenty-five thousand eight hundred and ten dollars from nondepartmental unappropriated grant contingency to salaries assistance line item, and twelve thousand eighty-eight dollars from grant indirect costs to administrative costs for a total transfer of two hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven G. Approval of budget amendment request one zero zero four four zero for public facilities to transfer eighteen thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars from facilities management, county building, repair, maintenance, to equipment capital to fund the purchase of a twelve-foot flatbed trailer for transporting equipment and supplies.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Chair will second. By Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven H. Approval of budget amendment request one zero zero four five zero for the Public Facilities Department to transfer eighty-eight thousand one hundred fourteen dollars from permanent improvement fund unappropriated contingency to Charlie Co. Chiller. Pride additional funding needed for change order number one to the Charlie Co. Chiller Replacement Project.
I'll move it through with second.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven I. Approval of budget amendment request one zero zero four six zero to roll over unspent funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five for the hot funds tourism grant twenty twenty-four, an amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand and four dollars. The Chair move for approval?
Same.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven J. Approval. Budget amendment request one zero zero four seven zero to transfer from permanent improvement fund unappropriated contingency to Stony Store Restoration for additional funds, an amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand and ten dollars required for the Stony Store Foundation portion of the project. Any appropriate action? The Chair move for approval?
Second. Do you need more coffee?
It's hot tea. Uh, so it's, a motion by the Chair. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven K. Approval budget amendment request one zero zero four eight zero for the Constable Precinct Six to transfer six thousand three hundred dollars with capital equipment line item and six hundred and thirty dollars from radio and radio to capital equipment for a total transfer of six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars to purchase a Motorola A P X sixty-five hundred radio. Any appropriate action?
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any, any opposed? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven L. Approval of budget amendment request one zero two six three zero for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to reallocate four million ninety-five thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars between line items within various departments and transfer one hundred and five thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars from nondepartmental unappropriated contingency to various departments for a total transfer of four million two hundred and one thousand two hundred and two dollars to cover line items at a shortage at the end of the fiscal year.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Judge, do you want one of us to?
Oh, no, I'm good. We're gonna keep on plowing here. We'll get it done. We'll squeak by. Next is ten A. Approval of the Meadows, but thank you, but approval of the Meadows Commercial Final Plat Block A lots one and two, Block B, lots one through eight. This is thirty-six point six five seven acres located, Commissioner Precinct Four.
I'll move it through with second.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is ten B. Approval of Meadow Park Phase Two Final Plat, one hundred and thirty-eight residential lots and six H O A lots, for a total of thirty-seven point four eight six acres located, Commissioner Precinct Four.
I'll move it through with.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is ten C. Approval of Meadow Park Phase Three Final Plat, one hundred and twenty-nine residential lots and four H O A lots. This is twenty-six point four one one acres located, Commissioner Precinct Four.
Judge, I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Yes, ma'am?
This development's developer is, uh, among the very first to sign on to our fire protection plan, and so we really appreciate that.
That's good.
That is great. Good corporate residents. Next is, uh, we have a motion for, what do we, 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 all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Bianca. Next is ten D. Approval of the request to construct private roads for Copper Creek Estates Three located, Commissioner Precinct Four.
I'll move it through with second.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen A. Approval of change order number one for more street building, H V A C renovation project to provide additional structural steel around R T U one and two per P C O number one, adding one hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents to the contract with funding to come from the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA. In any appropriate action?
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen B. Approval of change order number one for the Charlie Co. Chiller Replacement Project to extend the Chiller pad, remove the old fence, install new fence, extend the C W piping, heat trace and insulation per P C O number one, adding eighty-eight thousand one hundred fourteen dollars and twelve cents to the contract. In any appropriate action?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen C. Approval of space allocation to include renovating the Veteran Service Office at the Southwest Courthouse from, from relocating the Veteran Service Office. Did that sound right? Relocating the Veteran Service Office at the Southwest Courthouse from room five two one to rooms nine oh one and nine oh three, and reassigning room five two one to Constable Precinct Four. Any appropriate action?
I'll move it through with second.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen D. Approval for the county judge to sign a resolution from Corumdale Academy, approve the tax exempt financing and the project defined in the resolution solely for the purpose of satisfying the requirements of section one four seven F, the Internal Revenue Code. The Chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen G. Approval of reappointing Ms. Crystal Davis to the Denton County Sheriff's Civil Service Commission for a two-year term beginning January first, twenty twenty-five.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer. Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen H. Approval of obligating two hundred and seventy-three thousand of ARPA funds through September thirty, twenty twenty-six for the continuation of four contract labor positions in the Public Health Department. In any appropriate action?
Still move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen I. Approval of resolution finding that a Texas Tax Code, Chapter three twelve Tax Increment Agreement, Tax Incentive Agreement between Denton County, Texas and Bell Text Run Incorporated, and the subject property described in the agreement meet the guidelines and criteria set forth in the current Denton County Economic Incentive Policy twenty twenty-two, and the Denton County Commissioners Court hereby approves of the agreement as recommended by Denton County Economic Development Department and Denton County Commissioner Precinct Four. In any appropriate action? We have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson. The Chair will second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I want to thank Rena for all your good efforts on this one as well, my friend. We're about to go welcome them to the county here in about an hour.
Yeah.
Next is fourteen A. Approval of two tax assessor and collector bonds for Don Way, each an amount of a hundred thousand dollars, and each with a premium of one thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars to come from the general funds. County official bonds, order line item zero one five five one zero one zero four zero. Any appropriate action?
I'll move it through with second.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen B. That's a long one.
Yeah.
Approval of one constable bond, an amount of one thousand five hundred dollars for Johnny Hammond's reelect, reelected Denton County Constable Precinct One, with a premium of one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Two, constable bond, an amount of one thousand five hundred dollars for Michael Truitt, reelected Denton County Constable Precinct Two, with a premium of one, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. Number three, constable bond, an amount of one thousand five hundred dollars for Dan Rochelle, reelected Denton County Constable Precinct Three, with a premium of one thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Number four, constable bond, an amount of one thousand five dollars for Danny Lee Fletcher Junior, reelected Denton County Con- Constable Precinct Four, with a premium of one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Number five, con- constable bond, an amount of one thousand five hundred dollars for Doug Boitston, reelected Denton County Constable Precinct Five, with a premium of one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And number six, constable bond, an amount of one thousand five hundred dollars for Richard Bacus, reelected Denton County Constable Precinct Six, with a premium of one hundred and seventy-eight dollars, with funds to come from general funds. Denton County official bonds, order line item zero one five five one zero one zero four zero.
Judge, I'll move approval, but I have a question.
The fifty cents?
Yeah, how come, uh?
I don't know why that was, that's different. I don't know. We're saving fifty cents. We saved the fifty cents. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have a motion? A motion by Commissioner Edmondson. Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're gonna pull fourteen C per civil D A. Oh, my goodness. Are we done? Let me see here. There'll be no executive session on item fifteen A through C. There'll be no executive session today.
And fifteen D.
Fifteen A, fifteen B, fifteen C, and fifteen D. Yes, sir. There'll be no executive session. We've already done sixteen A. Let's go to seventeen, which is community updates. We'll start with Commissioner Precinct Two.
Thank you, Judge. So, um, I first wanted to, um, it's in precinct one, but since Commissioner Williams had to depart a little bit early, I just wanted to, um, make mention of, uh, our Texas Highway Patrol Officer Byron Parrot. Um, he responded to a call on the Dallas North Tollway, um, yesterday, and he was hit by a car. Um...
Who was hit by a car?
Huh? I, I don't know, but he was, he may have been, he may have been out, uh, because he was, he sustained severe head trauma. He was transported to the hospital, and we just want our prayers to go out. It is Bi- Brian Parrot, P A R R O T T, and, um, we need to keep him and his family in prayers. It's no, never a good time for that. This is an awful time.
Yeah.
Um, you know, our, uh, first responders, the most likely, um, injuries are on our highways. And so, when you're out there, you know, it's, it's law, but stay as far away as possible from those, um, flashing lights because, um, we do not need our officers getting hurt or killed. So, just wanted to mention that. Um, and then, um, we do have some, several events. I'll go, in fact, I'm, you know what? I'm sending out, uh, these will be in our newsletter, so I'm not gonna take the time because we're in a bit of a hurry, and I will, uh, mention those later.
Okay.
Motion.
Just make that for all of us.
All right. We're all gonna say Merry Christmas.
Yes.
I would like to note that there will be no Commissioners Court December the twenty-fourth, as that is Christmas Eve, and there'll be no Commissioners Court December thirty-first, as that is New Year's Eve, and we will be having our swearing in on January the first, twenty twenty-five, at one P M. So, agenda placements will be due by Friday, December twenty-seventh. That's what I remind all of our departments of that, and we will, uh, and there will be, I would like to just note there, no Commissioners Court Tuesday, January fourteenth, and January the twenty-first, but we will have a special, uh, meeting on Friday, January the seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, at nine A M. So, we have a traditional standard meeting then. All right. Is there any other announcements?
Judge, thank you. I, I just wanted to also, uh, thank you for the recognition of all the staff for the, for the ARPA and the putting this agenda together and, and, you know, apologize to a lot of the department heads and their staff. We've, we've worked them to death for the last three or four weeks and, and appreciate everybody, and, you know, they're putting this agenda together. You can see how big it was, but Teresa and, and the work that they've done. So, appreciate, you know, uh, auditor in the purchasing department, uh, civil D A. I mean, there's just so many, the name that's been put together and the collaboration and teamwork that did to put this agenda placement together. So, thank you again for that recognition, and thank the court for the flexibility to put this, put this together like we did, so.
Absolutely. Well, I wanna, as we, as this is our last meeting of the year, I just wanna say Merry Christmas to everyone, um, and Happy New Year. We'll see y'all next year. I wanna say how richly blessed we are. Number one, to be Americans, to, to be Texans, to, to be residents of Denton County, and to get to work for Denton County. Any of our Denton County Work Family that's watching, all the employees, if you're watching, or those in our room, I just wanna say thank you for what you do. We're all very blessed to have you part of our Denton County Work Family. We're all very blessed to have you part of our Denton County work family. And it, today was a, it was a long meeting, but it was, we did good work as we were able to, as we were able to be blessings to others as they continue to bless our Denton County residents. So thank y'all so much and Merry Christmas. We are adjourned.
Merry Christmas.